Good evening. This is Tuesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, meeting in the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Um, this is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members on the board, uh, a present can hear me, hear me prior to me calling me to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Carol McDonald.
Here.
Thomas Andrew.
Here.
With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M. Tuesday, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. This is an open meeting of the planning board can being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location and allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the planning board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they're concluding your remarks, I'll invite each board member by name to provide any comments, questions, penetrating insights, and all motions. Please hold all your insights till your name is called. Uh, board members and speakers, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure accurate minutes are recorded. For any response, please wait until you yield to the floor and state your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with another board member, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Alrighty, first order of business, we, can somebody make a motion to accept the minutes from last meeting?
I moved.
Go ahead.
I did so moved. You do second.
I'll second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes from the last planning board meeting. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Caroline McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Uh, any other business that we need to attend to? Mail?
No, I think, um, Jerry Byrne wanted to use this for a few minutes and try to squeeze that in. Can see in the audio.
He is.
Jerry Byrne, yeah. Um, yeah, seven forty, I said.
Seven forty. Well, that's.
Seven thirty nine.
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing. Okay, put him, could you promote him, please?
I can.
Put his drawing up here for you.
Excellent. Where do you guys go? Hello, Jerry, can you hear us?
You have to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay. Hi there, everybody. Um, we've lost her. Oh, there's some video. Uh, thank you for taking us on tonight. Um, uh, we've had to change our plot size. Can you hear me, everybody?
Yes.
Uh, we've had to change our plot size to come, um, in line with the, um, zoning bylaw for a home-based business. Um, I sent a map to Tom today. We have took twenty eight thousand square feet out of the orchard, and we combined it twenty eight thousand four hundred and fifty square feet out of the orchard, and we combined it with the, our house lot. We are now over a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. So we're greater than a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, and we're greater than three hundred feet frontage. We had the frontage to start with. That enables us to have two registered vehicles less than twenty six thousand G B W uh, as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, plus two trailers less than twelve thousand pounds G V W as registered with the Registry of Motor Vehicles, so that we are in, in compliance to have our home-based business here at one thirty six Central Street.
Alright.
Excellent.
I, I would note a couple of things that, um, it's, it's the Z B A that approves your home-based business plan. Um, but looking at this, what is before us tonight is whether you can uh, add parcel A to the lot, and I would make a motion that we approve this A and R because it seems to be entirely consistent with the bylaw.
So I do have a question, but I will second that motion first. They, they do have a question.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and now all entertaining questions. Caroline, what's your question?
So Jerry, that piece parcel A, um, there is no expectation that that will be outside of the Chedco C R, correct?
Oh, Carolyn, I can answer that question for you because I was on Conservation Commission, um, back in the day, and uh, the conveyance of a portion of the property doesn't affect the underlying, um, easement, and so parcel A will continue to be under the easement, if that was your question.
Uh, I know that's the law. I'm, I'm just verifying that's the expectation.
Yes, it, it, it's still part of the orchard. There's, um, and a little woodland there, and nothing is going to happen on that land. It hasn't happened uh, before. It's just now part of our house lot. That's all it is, but it's.
Yeah, and that's what I figured. This is just a formality to make the lot be in compliance with the other bylaws in town.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's what I figured. I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the right, same page.
Hold on.
Alright.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve this under the A and R. Um, we'll get the book and, we, Thomas, do you want to add the, um, book and page reference?
Yeah, let, hang on, because I'm looking at this on my iPhone. Uh, okay. Um.
Jay, you might have to switch it to the, where the, um.
Right here.
No, I can, yeah, I can say it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in accord, well, my motion we approve A and R in accordance with the plan presented to the board tonight for book four, five, oh, six, five, dash, fifty one regarding one thirty six Central Street in Berlin. Is that adequate?
That's mine.
It is, yeah.
And I will.
Okay, so we have a motion, and you, and Caroline, you seconded it.
Yep.
Any other further discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to ask you to vote. Uh, Caroline McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Uh, Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Alrighty.
Awesome.
Well, do, uh, do we need a Form A and all of the stuff to go along with this, or how do we do this?
Oh, we probably do because it's a new. Yeah, it's, it's something new, right? We still, we only created one lot, right?
Correct.
But it's different, so we probably need a Form A and a hundred and fifty dollars.
Well, I don't know about Form A, but we can get you a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, we don't go for nothing, Carrie.
But the Form A is free. Oh, there we go.
One of my favorite words. Um, okay, so, um.
We need the Mylar to be able to sign it, so you can, uh, uh, record it with the Registry of Deeds. So you, you probably have a Mylar and a couple of paper copies, right? That you got from Ross?
Oh, no, but, but we can get that off them. They just sent us this on the email. So we'll get the, we can get that off them.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And they, they should have a Form A.
Okay.
Okay, the website too.
Yeah.
Okay.
The website too. Okay?
Okay.
Awesome.
And if you want to get it signed, um, quickly, you might bring it around to three of us to sign it, because we don't really end up its town building very often anymore.
Okay.
Yeah, we can manage that.
One of the board members is kind of close to your property, so that would make it easy.
Does that mean?
Really, it's three of you.
All probably equidistant.
I gotta have one of the kids cycle around.
There you go.
You gotta bring the Mylar and the three pa, the paper copies.
Okay.
Yeah.
And a hundred and fifty bucks.
Somebody has to have a pen. The hundred and fifty bucks actually goes to Eloise, to the town building.
Okay, awesome.
It should be the Town of Berlin, a hundred and fifty bucks, and you should submit it with the Mylar and the Form A.
Okay, alright, Tom.
And you can put, you know, A and R fee in the memo line if you like, just for your own records, okay?
Yes, okay, A and R fee.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome, we have it.
Alrighty.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thanks, bye bye.
Alrighty. So we had, uh, what's the next item? Was a continuation?
Yeah, continuation of the, um, preliminary hearing for two forty eight Central Street, I think it is.
Okay, uh, Tom Greg Roy has his hand up.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna let him talk first. Hey Greg.
Hey, everybody, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think that, um, I, I think that Bruce Wheeler, uh, the applicant is here, um, or I, I believe he, he is, and also, um, uh, Attorney Latham, uh, maybe also there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were raising your hand because you were presenting this.
Yeah, I'm gonna present, I'm gonna present this, but I think, uh, those two would like, I need those two to participate, and actually, if, um, Ry, expect Ryan Proctor from my office to be logging in shortly as well. If you could, um, advance him to, I, I have a, I have to get on another meeting at eight fifteen in a different town, so I'm, I'm a little short on time. So if you guys are still talking, I'm gonna, uh, uh, pass it over to Ryan at that time, so.
Alright, Greg, I'm gonna put you back in the audience for a second to then promote you, so you can use your camera.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Let's go here, and then we will promote everybody.
Yeah, we have to sign up at eight anyways for the hearing.
Yeah, we have to stop at eight.
Greg, alright, there we go, everyone's coming in now.
Okay, how's that?
Excellent.
Okay, super. Thank you, everybody. Are we, uh, we ready to get, ready to get started?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, yeah, I know you're short on time too, so thank you for having us this evening. My name's Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. Um, I am here with, uh, Bruce Wheeler, uh, who's on the call, and I think, uh, I think Attorney Latham is also on the call. Um, we were before you a few months back, uh, with this, um, with this uh, subdivision, and we've, we've made a couple of changes, um, and also provided some information to you relative to the proposed right-of-way, uh, through the, uh, frontage lot on Central Ave. Um, so I wanted to quickly, uh, summarize the, the changes that we made to the plan, and then also, um, I wanted, we wanted to discuss um, the, uh, Attorney Latham provided, um, provided some guidance relative to the timing of the, um, right, the creation of the right-of-way, um, which was, I think, one of the, one of the more substantive comments that you folks had at the last, the last time we were before you. So really, the, the most significant, the, really, the only change we made to the plan was to reduce the number of lots from six to five. Uh, we've eliminated one of the lots on the far side of the existing railroad right-of-way. Um, so we have, uh, effectively reduced this down to a, um, you know, to a five-lot subdivision. All of the other metrics, um, that we presented with the, uh, with the proposed road, um, access through the right-of-way, uh, from Central Street, um, the creation of the, uh, cul-de-sac road turnaround, and things have all remained the same. Um, you know, in general, the right-of-way that, uh, that advances, uh, to the northerly side of the right-of-way is also the same. It's just that we're accessing it, um, only to, only to one lot. Um, all, again, all of the other, um, items of the, of the plan, uh, remain the same, uh, from before, and just, it's, it's been a few months, so just to refresh, we're, we're here for preliminary filing, so we, we, um, we completely understand that we have more, um, more work ahead of us, should, should your board, um, uh, uh, sh- should we close out the preliminary process here? Uh, we would be then moving to the definitive design stage, where we would be preparing not only definitive subdivision plans, but, um, associated drainage calculations, and also, um, a detailed, um, uh, notice of intent, um, for the, uh, for the proposed wetland, uh, crossing. So while we show some of those details on the plan, we'd certainly be providing more detail and in a definitive set, um, so that you, your board, as well as the Conservation Commission, uh, will certainly have another, uh, bite of the apple, so to speak, in a more definitive sense, uh, when we get those, uh, those details prepared, um, uh, in, in greater detail. Um, so I think I wanted to, uh, pass it off to Attorney Latham. I don't see him here on the call, but is he available?
He's here, yeah, and Ryan just showed up as well.
Okay, great. Um, I think that I'll pass it off to Attorney Latham. Um, he's going to go over our proposal, I, I guess, our response to your question, uh, relative to the timing of the, uh, of the creation of the right-of-way through the, through the abutting parcel off of Central Ave.
Can the board hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Excellent. Uh, I've been asked to address one question. It really is a matter of sequence. The, uh, development, it has to cross over a portion of two forty eight Central, and if one were to slice that piece off now, uh, two forty eight Central would have, uh, inadequate zoning, uh, zoning frontage. Uh, so the question was, what's the sequence to follow to be able to make sure it conforms along the process and ends up with two forty eight being a freestanding lot, still with conforming frontage on the way? And so having gone through that, it seemed to me that the appropriate steps would be, uh, for the, once the permits are obtained, the board would impose, uh, the subdivision covenant. They would prevent, uh, any construction of dwellings, uh, until adequate access was provided to the lots in which those dwellings are located. So to attain that objective, uh, an easement would be granted by two forty eight. Um, and two forty eight would retain the fee and would retain its frontage on Central. Uh, the, the applicant would then complete the roadway to town's approval, and once it's approved, that roadway would provide frontage on two forty eight, and two forty eight could then convey the fee to that portion of the roadway, uh, to be part of the, uh, subdivision. So they have a roadway providing adequate access. The robbery would have a fee that would be connected to the lots and the subdivision itself. And we felt that that sequence would accomplish the objectives. The protective covenant would assure the town that before any lots could obtain building permits, there would be adequate access to those lots. That was our suggested, uh, resolution of the sequence of the development. Thank you.
But, thanks very much, Brad. Appreciate that. Um, that was really the bulk of our presentation, um, uh, this evening, so, you know, we're happy to take any questions or comments that you folks may have, uh, relative to, uh, any of that info.
Yeah, my sense is that the attorney's, um, explanation is probably gonna prove to be adequate. Um, my only other question is in regard to the right-of-way across the, um, M B T A land, um, and, and how you're working on securing that sixty-foot axis.
We, we have made a formal filing, um, to them, uh, and initiated that process. Um, it, it is still in progress. Um, you know, but again, like I said before, we're, we're here tonight for preliminary. Um, I think that before we come back before you for a definitive, we'd have to have that, that solved. Um, so, so certainly, um, you know, the, a- any definitive subdivision before it was, would be brought before you, we would have to have, it would be it would, a prerequisite to that would be having that, uh, resolved.
Yeah, good. I mean, otherwise, just eliminate that leg and give us a definitive that doesn't show it and add it at a later time or something.
Well, well, right, and, and so, and we, you know, we thought that the best, the best course would be to proceed with it as, you know, it, it, it probably, yeah, if we were to come before you in that, as you just mentioned, Mr. Wheeler, I, I think that, you know, um, an action on this preliminary would, would cover that, you know, that outcome too. We'd have the guidance we needed to, to prepare that definitive, should we decide to act that way. This represents kind of a worst case from a development standpoint. So when does, when does the creation of the lots happen? I know that the, um, they're going to get a easement from the, um, existing house, and that'll allow them to build the roadway. And then once the roadway is built, then we can, as a board, approve the lot configurations.
That's, that, that's all part of the definitive plan. We're gonna approve the whole.
Whole shebang at one time.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then I think through conditions or, and/or covenants, as, as Attorney Latham mentioned, will handle the, the sort of nitty-gritty with the timing, um, of when certain lots are released and, and those kind of things. Um, but yes, were we to prepare and file a definitive subdivision, and you were to approve it, you know, and we were to record it, um, you know, effectively, we would have created the lots, although uh, deeds may not have been created yet. So technically speaking, from a legal standpoint, the lot's not technically created until you have, until you have an actual deed. Uh, so, you know, there, there'll be some nitty-gritty that we'll have to work through with your board, I think, um, you know, during the definitive process, but we think it's, uh, we, we think there's a path forward for sure.
Is, is it possible to have your attorney, um, send us that draft of text that's gonna outline this strategy for the transfer of the right-of-way of, at some later point with the covenant in place?
The, well, we did prepare a letter that you should have.
Oh, we've got that?
Yeah, you, you have that.
Okay, I didn't find it yet. So, okay, good. Thank you.
We, we submitted the le, it's actually addressed to, he, he issued, Attorney Latham addressed the letter to me, but we did provide it to you, to you folks. But for some reason, you don't have it. I, I can resend it for sure.
No, it's probably.
With the, uh, I sent it with the drawing last week.
Good, I'll dig it up. Thanks. Good.
Anybody have any quick questions? Because we're bumping up against our time.
Nope.
No?
Very efficiently handled within the timeframe.
Okay, good, excellent. Um, so you'll work on stuff, and then you'll make another appointment to come before us, because we'll have a timing issue on this. Yeah, well, it doesn't sound like you're looking for anything else from us. Um, and I'm honestly, I'll be, I'll be, um, candid by saying I'm not sure what type of, um, th- this is a preliminary, and different planning boards do that differently. Uh, are you, is your board accustomed to issuing some sort of preliminary decision? Um, and if so, I guess, are we ready for that?
Yeah, we're supposed to put, provide a response within forty-five days.
Yeah, which we've, of course, extend, extended your time tact, uh, effectively, but I guess if, if you don't have any other questions and feel comfortable, uh, with the information we provided, we'd certainly would like a, uh, an up, uh, you know, a, an affirmative vote on the, on the preliminary, if you're willing to do it.
So I would say that at our next meeting, we take action on the preliminary plan, have a vote that sets things in motion, so they can continue with the definitive. If there's anything we want to point out, that we can do so at that time, but we meet on the fourth of, uh, fourth of October, is that right?
No.
Hmm, November.
November.
Yeah.
Oh, ne, next week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
So we, we could, uh, we ought to tend to it and get it underway, so you can move forward.
That would be terrific.
Thank you, everyone. We really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. We'll see you in a week then. Excellent. Thank you. Okay, thanks.
To make sure we have a meeting next week, because.
Because we had to. Yeah, um, we weren't gonna have enough attendees on the eleventh.
The eleventh's a holiday.
Eleventh is a holiday.
Oh, that's right.
But somebody else was using the channel.
Oh, for the fourth?
So I asked Leanne to see if she could find another solution, but I don't think I heard back from her.
Well, we really need to open the hearing, guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that. We'll talk about this later.
Yeah, we talked about that afterwards.
Yeah.
Alright, Jay, do you want to stop sharing, or you want me to unshare you?
Share, there we go. How's that?
Go.
Okay, do we have, um, text for the language of, uh, what we're here, we're having a hearing on? That we can put on the screen?
Uh, yeah, it was in the agenda. Let me find that. Oh, get deleted.
Well, I'll officially open the hearing at eight oh four P M. Tuesday, ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. To make it official, we, um, actually published this in the item.
Yes, sir.
Two consecutive weeks. And Mr. Wheeler has proof of that.
Yes.
It is official.
Um, the first article is fairly straightforward. There it is. Um, because there's no specific text in the, um, regional shopping center overlay district that talks about uses, we went to the definition of regional shopping center and added language in that that would allow drive-through, drive-up facilities is what it is, actually. Um, and for Highland Commons or the Highway Shopping Center. Overlay District, where there is specific language in the text of that section, we modified that language to allow drive up facilities for fast food restaurants. So that's the the explanation.
Yep, and that obviously has the effect of allowing them in the overlay district.
For that particular shopping district.
Just that overlay district, yes.
Yep.
Are we going to this is one motion or two?
You mean in terms of
the In terms of the the vote of the planning board in favor or against it.
How is the is there two warrants or one warrant?
This would just be one article on the warrant.
Okay, so, yeah, all right, then it should be one motion. Yep.
That's correct.
Well, I have no objection to that portion of it.
Anybody else have a comment or a question on the proposed language?
Do we have any audience members that want to participate? I see one audience member. I'm not sure they want to participate. Where it is a public hearing.
She's not raised her hand. So.
I had an email from Susannah Roberts that she wanted us to consider during the meeting.
Okay, she is here.
Well, she is. All right, then I guess she can do it instead of me.
Oh, there's her hand. Hey, Sue.
Hello. I wasn't sure if you were opening up conversation to the audience yet, so sorry about that.
No worries.
All right. My only concern was the additional trash that we anticipate from drive throughs and adding maybe another portion of the article or the bylaw that the permit has a stipend to pay for trash pickup along the main roads.
So Highland Commons already is obligated to pick up trash. I don't know about actually on Central Street, but on Gates Pond Road, Malborough Road and Fosgate.
Yeah, we do see a lot of it on Central Street because they essentially, like, say, if you're heading home to Clinton and you stop for food and you do that at Highland Commons, you're gonna come through sixty two.
Yep.
Or should I say Central Street?
So how do you see that working? So they put money aside and then the town hires somebody?
Uh, yeah, if if the money is earmarked for Highway Department for whatever, how many days throughout the year it seems necessary.
You know, I I think it's worth discussing. Unfortunately, we we can't.
We can't change the article. We can only vote in favor or against it. Yeah, at this point.
We could so and and an attempt to make a motion on the floor probably would be, I don't know, the the moderator might consider it out of order.
Right, because you're making it more.
Yeah.
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 May I may I suggest this that can we review the Highland Commons obligation, which may cover Central Street, because sometimes these things aren't done when they could be done? Um, and then commit to getting back to Suzanne about what to do at a subsequent meeting that might expand that to Central Street? Since that's already in place and would cover it and then would also, you know, be associated with all of the trash that comes from Highland Commons rather than just any potential drive through.
But we are talking about both highway or both overlay districts.
Right.
So we're not. No, 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 that's right. That's why I'm saying I think it's better dealt with as a separate issue. Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I was thinking more in terms of the permitting fees. So it could be added even if this article passes, it could be written as a later article for the permitting, because I think it's important not to just include Central Street, but surrounding areas. There Brewer Road in particular.
Okay. No, and I think. Yeah.
Yeah.
And, you know, Pleasant Street, I, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, you know, it's it's an issue we all have if we're on a fairly busy road. But I think, you know, the appropriate way to do it is that we have a foundation to build on, which is Highland Commons has committed to some measure of the support of trash pickup on some streets. So let's see what we have and then perhaps, uh, you know, try to deal with that at a Highland Common level at least.
Okay, are you anticipating Dunkin' Donuts coming back? They've requested a drive through in the past as well as the little restaurants off the Rotary on River Road?
No, this uh, this article only covers Highland Commons and the Regional Shopping Center Mall, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's what Sue was asking, though. I think what she was asking is that if this passes, do we anticipate some sort of action from Dunkin' Donuts and
Oh, yes, okay.
Pizza Place.
Well. Yeah, I mean, I can brew a cup of tea, read the tea leaves, but they might they might come back, but I think that I would say that one of the reasons this is limited to those two areas is that we have had concern with allowing drive ins that are more, if you will, sort of intimately connected with other uses as opposed to isolated on these large commercial plots. So they might, but I think the history and if I I don't even have to read the tea leaves, I think reading the future, you know, people would not, you know, would continue to not view those probably as in a favorable light, but that's just my own opinion.
So why didn't we include River Bridge?
Why?
Correct.
It well, I can answer that for myself. My feeling is that River Bridge is more closely associated with other uses. It's a much more isolated plot. Was a very constrained site uh, to begin with, and the town meeting has voted it down at least twice, if memory serves me. And the definition of, you know, insanity is to keep doing the same thing and expecting a different result. So that's why I wasn't in favor of it.
So I'm trying to grasp, you know, we're 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 zoning two large parcels that were underlying or that were created through overlays. So I'm trying to defend the fact that we created these when somebody may come along and say, well, what about the overlay that was done down there? Now, you're saying that it was the parcel was constrained, and I get that it was constrained um, through the proponent trying to get the the parcel to or to get the whole development to go through and get a a yes vote at town meeting. Um, so he was willing to protect some of that land, but I just find it's going to be challenging to defend our position when you have somebody like Dunkin' Donuts that comes along and says, well, tell me why it's not A, opened up for all of the town, or how do you defend this decision that we look at it as it's spot zoning on these two particular parcels?
Well, yeah, I guess what I would say is we have put this before the people at least twice, and they have voted down, and the people are sovereign in that regard. They could refuse these two articles. If somebody wants to propose it again, we'll consider it. But again, I, you know, I mean, the people said no at least twice. And to my mind, there are reasons why the people are saying that. I don't I don't think it's a big I don't think it's a big issue, and I don't think it's relevant to the article that's you know, that we're 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 speaking about tonight and moving toward a vote to recommend or not to recommend.
I still find it challenging because I think that we're going to be accused of being arbitrary and capricious.
I I yeah, well, I I just don't see that. We, when when the when the River Bridge proponents suggested it, we it it was on the town meeting warrant, again, at least twice, and the people voted it down. The people, the people can be arbitrary and capricious. The boards can't be. If somebody came before it.
It's our article.
I don't I don't see what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, the proponents at River Bridge have put this before us. It's gone on to town meeting twice. They want to put it on a third time. We'll entertain that.
Correct.
Yeah, you know, so I think that disposes of I really do think that disposes of the issue and I think that adding River Bridge to this, again, given our experience with putting something before the town, um, that that would greatly complicate things and you know, probably put in jeopardy, you know, for those who are in favor of this motion, put this motion in jeopardy. And I don't think that's it's an arbitrary and capricious reason to consider the article we have before us and deal with, you know, whatever River Bridge feels they want to do in the future.
Well, I'm just thinking not just River Bridge, it could be anybody at that point. I mean, we've had people from Narear up here in the other end of town.
Right. Look at. No, no, no. And I think, you know, if a proponent, again, if a proponent comes and suggests that, we can review it, we can put it before the town. There are certainly differences with respect to the impacts of things that are not in areas that are really guaranteed to be far away from other alternate uses. And to me, you know, that's a that's a bona fide and not an arbitrary and not a capricious distinction to make. That if, you know, if we're gonna allow this in tighter areas, in more conflicted areas, to consider that separately, if somebody raises it and wants us to consider it, yeah, I think I think that's a solid approach and not arbitrary and capricious.
I guess I still struggle with the fact that we just put it in two zones and you know, how is it not considered spot zoning?
Well, I mean, those are existing highly commercial zones. This is a small tweaking of that.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, my own feeling is that there are all kinds of uses in those zones that couldn't be allowed at River Bridge or couldn't be allowed where Dunkin' Donuts are. We are adding one thing to that. If it was spot zoning, it'd be spot zoning with respect to all those other uses they can't do. Uh, you know, I, uh, yeah, I don't I don't see it's an issue. We're just we're just tweaking the allowances with what is already a zone. It's a pretty big spot, if you will, but it's it it's already a zone that is distinguished from other underlying zoning in the town. I, you know, I I have to say, I'm not I'm not concerned about it, and I'm very open to anybody who is outside of those zones, bringing this use in front of us and let chips fall where they may.
Can I ask a quick question? Is the is Highland Commons one parcel or several parcels?
One.
Okay.
And and more importantly, it's one overlay zone.
Okay, because I and and I'm I'm sure you you already know this, but if it's more than one parcel, then it's not considered spot zoning. If it's spot zoning usually refers to uh, intentionally harming or benefiting one particular owner?
Right. No, that though, you're absolutely right. However, something like this, which is an overlay zone, which is, yeah, and again, this was, when did this go back to? Two thousand twelve, guys? The the whole zone has a whole bunch of uses that are not allowed otherwise in town. And the town council and the Attorney General has approved of that as not spot zoning because they've approved of it as a local zoning bylaw. And all we're doing is is tweaking ever so slightly because they can have the restaurants there, but those restaurants can have drive through. So, you know, I I think the fact that the underlying area and the underlying zoning has already been reviewed and is not spot zoning to do this little tweak, it it's just inconceivable to me that this would then be considered spot zoning. And again, somebody can say, because we allowed it there, we should allow it in other places. And and, you know, if somebody wants to do that, we're too bound to consider it and act accordingly.
I just think we're opening ourselves up for litigation from proponents that aren't happy when we decide that, no, it's not appropriate to put it at sixty two at the mobile station.
Yeah, again, I mean, my my feeling is that's extremely remote, extremely remote. And and again, they could say that, and then what would happen? Then we'd have to take it to the town meeting and vote. And twice before, the town meeting has rejected drive throughs in other places. So, you know, I just don't see somebody suing us on that basis.
So if 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 the the citizenry of the town voted twice to say, no, we don't want this, why are we bringing this up again?
What I was saying was they voted, this was River Bridge that I was speaking about.
Correct.
River Bridge brought it twice in that location.
Yep.
That was an overlay zone. People voted it down. What we're saying is now we're we're doing this with respect to two other parcels.
Yeah.
And that's it. I mean.
Right, and I would say that we're doing this in response to the citizens petition.
We are indeed.
We didn't come up with this on our own. Um, and that we feel that this is a cleaner way to do what the citizens petition was asking.
Yeah, this this article would, you're absolutely right, Karen. This article is going to be there.
Right, we would, this would, right, but this would not be, we would not be taking doing this if not for the citizens petition.
Yeah, sorry, I misspoke. This issue would be on, you know, would be voted on whether we put this article on or not, given that there was a citizens petition. We altered it so it fit within the zoning bylaw. So, you know, I mean, I just don't see it as an issue.
So as a board, we're reacting to the citizens position. So as a board, we're reacting to the citizens' posi- petition and. Making it more perfect than how it was presented. Uh, however, it's not something the board would have. Well, I guess we'll vote on it and then we'll see whether the board would.
No, 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 I think, I, I think it's a good, it's a good point to make. In the past, the board only put it, only considered it because a landowner proposed it. In this case, we're only considering it because there's a citizens petition. Okay?
That's fine. I just don't want to be misconstrued that we're pushing.
No, I get, I, I get your, I get your point and I think, I think it's a good one and. I think it was good to have this discussion.
Mr. Wheeler, you have a question or a comment?
So there, there has been an occasion in the past where. The planning board sponsored an article for drive-throughs. That included all three of the overlays. And. Um, the planning board vote was against it, but the. Planning board, my recollection is, we sponsored the article. Let me think about that. Anyway, there, there has been a time when not just Duncan was on the list, it was all three overlays.
Now. But it went before the town meeting and was voted down.
Right. Now, I. In my conversations with Central Mass, as we talked about. The, the rewriting of the overlay for Solomon Pond Mall. I felt comfortable. Moving forward with the. Inclusion of drive-throughs at that site. As, as part of the rewrite. Now, we haven't talked about that in depth, but. At some point, I think I was going to be comfortable. With moving in that direction. For the highway, for the regional shopping center overlay being rewritten. So I don't find it, I guess I don't find it. Extraordinary. I don't think it's entirely the, the result of the citizens petition that. I'm comfortable with looking at this. For these two sites to be voted on at town meeting.
No, and I think that's what I was saying, that, you know, when you look at the substance of the, and the history of the thing, I was comfortable with it. And I think Karen's point, and it's a very good one. We're reacting to things and will continue to react to things if people submit them to us. Citizens or landowners or other proponents.
I've asked, I've, I've reached out to Heather and asked. The question about. Spot zoning.
Heather White, Town Council?
Yeah. And haven't heard back from her yet.
Yeah. You know, like I say. Given the fact, if this were spot zoning, think about all of the other uses that aren't allowed otherwise. Those would be spot zoning too. There's no distinction to be made.
So. Here's my other dilemma with this. We, we. Typically, the planning board reacts to a proponent coming before us. With a proposal. They have a restaurant that they want to add this to. We're reacting to a citizens petition that was put in place because. They're looking for a tax revenue stream, something along those lines. So, to me, we're opening the door. To solve a problem that's not a problem yet, because no one's brought anything before us. And the way that it was conceived wasn't well thought out. We bailed them out by making the language more correct in terms of zoning. Article and, and, and format and substance. But there is nothing, there's, there's nothing, no one's got a proposal yet. So we're creating something for the future.
Well, my response to that would be this, that there's still a substantial portion in Berlin that is not developed. Restaurants are a higher yielding tax use. And the types of restaurants. Allowing some restaurants to you to have drive-through. Expands the possibility of getting proposals that will be. Perhaps more readily developed and if they are, if they are developed, will yield a higher tax rate. Again, when you're talking about an arbitrary and capricious standard, and you're talking about it in the context of. Tweaking a use because they could have that restaurant in Berlin anyway, under the existing zoning bylaw. But to tweak it slightly. Again, looking at an arbitrary capricious standard and the fact that we're adjusting the uses so that. Allowed uses become perhaps more of a possibility and a higher yield when they happen. Is a perfectly bona fide public purpose for making a slight tweak to the overlay zone. You still there?
Yeah, I am. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking your. Explanation through.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm, my iPhone, I was worried.
Yeah, no, no, no.
And I lost you for a moment, sorry. Take all the time you want.
So my, my last, my last, my last concern is. We've decided to put this into those two zones and I understand why. And I understand that that's, you know, they're, they're a large parcel and there is still undeveloped. Uh, parcels that are within their, uh, in the overlay that. Would, uh, uh, it would be a better and higher use tax-wise, generate income for the town or everything else. I get that. There's no proponent coming along just yet. I get that too. However, we're. Asking the people that surround those parcels. To put up with another burden. We've burdened them already once when we put this, these overlays in. And chased, you know, th- this development. Now we're asking them to have an additional burden. In the terms of trash, in the terms of all kinds of other things that are around there. And I just think it's sort of unfair. That we're asking them to do this if we're not willing to put it through the rest of the town. We're only willing to put it in those areas and I understand why. So, to me, I, I just think that it's. We're pandering towards a certain small segment that thinks this is a good idea.
Well. I, I certainly don't view myself as pandering on this. You know, my, my own feeling is, one. It's a, it's a, it's a small increment to any impact that already exists. One, two. It's in front of town meeting and people get to speak up. And that, and three. Because of Suzanne raising these issues, we've agreed. To look at the impacts on Highland Commons and maybe we should look at the impacts of the others as well. As far as cleanup, I would also note. That only with respect to the large commercial developments have we imposed mitigation measures, however. Inadequate with respect to the surrounding entities, you know, so. It, there is, you know, there is a balance here, you know, and, but. I guess what I say is, I'd, I'd like to sort of refocus on the fact that. Further down the warrant, we're going to have a citizens petition. On this and what we're, you know, that means what we're voting on here. Is this particular characterization of that. So that if the issue gets passed, it fits within the zoning bylaw. As opposed to it being considered later and. Not being, uh. Terribly well integrated into the zoning bylaw.
Well, I understand why we, we did it. Why it was written the way it was written and the strategy behind that. I get that. I'm just looking at the merits of the idea.
Yeah.
On its own.
No, I agree. You know, I mean. You know, I mean, I'm actually in favor of this. But as I have said often before. I am personally not in favor and. Never a client of. Drive-throughs, you know. Yeah, absolutely. I get it.
Correct, yep.
Yeah, I mean, if Tony and I are traveling and she wants to stop at Dunkin's and goes through the drive-through, I actually get out of the car.
I do too.
I feel that strongly about it, but, uh, you know, anyway. Um, but. You know. Look at, looking at the other, you know, looking at the other issues, you know, I, I really do think that. There's a citizens petition. It is what it is. I would. You know, I, I intend to vote positively with respect to this because, as I say, I think if these things are ever. Personally, I think if these things are ever appropriate, they are appropriate in places that. Minimize the impact by virtue of physical distance, et cetera. And other mitigating measures, uh, you know, of, of people around them and the greater externalities, but anyway. Think we could talk about this all night.
All right, so you suggest we move on and look at, consider the other half of the article?
The, the other warrant article?
Well, this, yes.
Sorry, the other half of this one, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Are, are they two separate ones, Tim?
There's two articles.
Oh, two articles, okay. That's why you said they were only one. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's this one that we've read and then there's the citizens petition.
Oh, no, no, sorry. But the second half of this one.
Correct.
Right, the, 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 yeah, to, the proposal to modify the two overlay districts. By the planning board is one warrant article.
Right.
Right. And we haven't, I mean, maybe we can short circuit it a little bit, but. The second half of the article does the same thing, but you want to explain how it integrates that into the. I, you, you talked about the, the definitional change with respect to the shopping center overlay. Do you want to speak about the, the other one, Tim?
Well, I mean, the, I, I thought I did, so the, the. The first part of the article that we're, um, talking about. Addresses the highway shopping center overlay, which is Highland Commons. And it, it simply includes language that allows drive-up facilities in that section of the bylaw. In that overlay section. And then the, the other part is in regard to the regional. Shopping center and because there's no language in that section that deals with uses, we've. Included it in this, the definition section. So, I mean, that's the explanation of.
Okay.
Pieces.
But I think anything that we've said thus far can be said about the other half. I would like to make a motion that the board.
So.
Approve the article and then we can, yeah, go ahead.
So traditionally, we, we have the hearing, then we close the hearing and then we, we vote.
Okay, sorry. Okay.
I think that's been our tradition. We don't have to do it.
No, 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 let's, yeah, you're right. It's been, this is probably the first time since I've been off for quite a while doing something.
You're a young man.
Wilds of being a selectman, but yes, please, and sorry about for that. Yep. And then I'd make a motion to close the hearing of us.
Well, we, we've got to talk about the citizens petition.
Oh, right.
Cause we, we have to act, we have to have a vote, both of these in order to have them considered at town meeting.
You're right, I'm getting ahead of myself because I see it's eight forty. Apologies.
We have to vote on the, um, citizens petition as well?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a zoning article.
Oh, as to whether we're in support.
Right.
I see.
We have to make a report from our position as a planning board to the town meeting. On any zoning article.
Got it.
And we. We hand that document to the town clerk and it gets included. If the planning board doesn't report. My, my recollection is that an article can't be. Addressed. For a certain period of time. I, I, I should go back and review that, but that's. Yeah, anyway, that's not what's going to happen. We're gonna.
So do we bother talking about the language of the citizens petition? I mean, we realize that, huh?
You know, I mean, I think we can say that it, its intent was to. Uh, provide for drive-up facilities in. The highway shopping center overlay district, as well as the regional shopping center overlay district, but. Uh, the way it was laid out. Wasn't, because they didn't include language that modified the highway, the regional shopping center overlay district. Specifically in that, the sections that pertain to that. It might not pass muster. With a review from the attorney general's office and stuff.
Suggest that the report could say that. And if this isn't too cute to make the recommendation that. Our article should be made as a motion under the citizens petition article. That we would recommend that.
So, the, our article would be considered first.
Right.
Um, and then. I think what we've talked about is. Explaining that. If our article were to pass, there would be no need to consider the citizens petition.
Right.
Our article would have failed, then. The, the warrant, I mean, the warrant would just pick up on the next article, which would be the citizens petition and there'd be a. An, uh, debate and vote on that.
No, and what I was saying was, you know, that our recommendation is that. We should report that it is consistent with our article. Is that what you're saying, Tim?
Yeah, um, its intent is consistent.
Its intent is consistent.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what the intent was.
If our report is, so her purchase say. The intent is consistent, but we would recommend that. If people approve this, they make a motion in the form presented in the previous article. Cause otherwise we can't integrate it, right?
Yeah, now. Generally, our formal report just records the vote and then. Outside of that report. We can do an explanation. Um.
Okay.
Then it doesn't have to be some long text that we hand the town clerk. We can.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
But I don't have anything else to add about the citizen's petition.
Okay, then. I'll make my motion that we close the, uh. The meeting unless there are other comments.
The hearing.
The hearing, right.
Nice try.
And the media, nice try, right? I'm hoping to do the other thing soon, but, uh, yeah, anyway.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to close the hearing. Is there any further discussion? To keep the hearing open or going? This is only for the hearing. Seeing none, I will ask you to vote to close the hearing. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carol and McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye. Motion carries unanimous. Hearing is closed.
And now do we do the votes?
You can do the votes tonight. You can do the votes in the, on the fourth. You can do, you know, you, you, it, as long as we do it before town meeting, which.
Okay.
Means we.
Well, you want to do it on the fourth so people have a chance to think about. What we talked about tonight?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, me too.
It's fine with me.
Does that mean we're, does that mean we're done for tonight?
Um, let me just bring up two quick things.
Hold on, hold on, yeah. I don't think this, Jay, that's the last agenda item, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, um. Ron Baron is. Ready to revisit us and, um, I wasn't sure whether our agenda on the fourth was jam-packed. I know. You don't have too much, do you?
I don't think we have anything on the agenda.
So we could have Ron come at like, uh, what quarter past eight and be safe or something like that?
Well, we've also continued the, uh, Central Street subdivision.
Yeah. Uh, but, um. I don't think that's gonna.
Did they say they were gonna come back on the fourth?
They did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um. So is eight fifteen all right?
Do we need to make it that late? Can we do everything else before eight? Keeping in mind, we can do the vote at the end. I mean, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah. It takes plenty of time, yeah.
Okay, I'll tell them eight. Um. Jane Wirick. Has left CMRPC. She was the other point person that was working with us. She's gone back to a job in Oklahoma that she was with previously.
Oh.
Um. So Ron is our point person now on the rewrite. Um, and then there'll probably be some other people that'll join in for bits and pieces of it.
Hmm.
Um. The sale of Solomon Pond Mall. From what Liz said to folks is. Probably going to be closer to the. The first of December rather than early in November, but still seems like it's on track.
Okay.
Um. And then I did a little preliminary look at the common driveway on Sawyer Hill that Plaster just built. And in our accounts, there, there is. A small sum of money. I think it's less than a hundred bucks that's left in, in that account. I'm going to be in the town hall tomorrow again, so I'll look at the file on that common driveway, but. Um. Jolly Plastridge wants to. Come in and meet with the board at some point. And, uh. I think. Maybe we'll wait until after town meeting, um. But they, I think we need to ask the fire department and the highway department to. To look at what's been constructed because the fire department needs to be satisfied that there's a good turnaround and. I think the highway department needs to be confident that it integrates with the Sawyer Hill Road. Does that make sense from other people's perspective?
What is their, what do they want to do?
They want us to say it's complete, um.
They're trying to turn the road over to us?
No, they, 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 they've never gotten a sort of, I'm, I gotta go back and look at common driveways, but. Um. Someone's holding money. And it may be one of the landowners. But I don't think they've put a finished coat on that, um, a top coat.
Yep.
So. I, I think we need to look at the language about common driveways and just make sure that. Whatever responsibilities we might have for signing off, that it's satisfactory.
Well, they do owe a top coat.
Yeah, there's. The top coat and the right, and the proportional turnaround, um.
That's correct.
And perhaps some, um. Sort of widenings at certain spots so two cars can pass.
All passing, yep.
But I thought, would it make sense to have highway and fire just take a look at it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So I can ask them if. They're out in the boat, if they just want to. Tour through and make sure that they're satisfied.
So the clearing of that lot that's near the entrance. Is that for a house?
Um. There were seven house lots total. Is that right? One was. I thought only. The one that got built was on the street.
I think there's two further down, two or three further down that have been built.
Two.
But I know that some of the butters.
Bought land.
In the other direction bought lots.
So if there were seven lots, then several got. Sold to a butters.
Yeah.
There's the potential of five units other than the seven, if there were seven. One got built on Sawyer Hill.
Right.
There are three that have been built in the back.
Yep.
And so there's four out of the potential five lots that would have been.
Cause the corner lot now has been clear cut.
Yeah, how did we, it, it seems to me that we must have missed the boat again when it came to. The creation of one affordable unit out of that seven.
Hmm. Yeah, how do we ensure that on Central Street?
Well.
They didn't say anything.
They're under five now.
They're under, you know, they're five or, they're under six.
Five or under, you don't have to.
Oh, is that amazing? I thought it was, I thought it was. I thought five was the number where they had to have one.
Yeah, it's six and, and it's under six.
Yeah.
Got it.
So.
So I think on the plaster, plaster is five. Hmm.
I think the plasterage, I think there's only two houses down at the end right now.
Hmm.
Yeah, but there's more than, there's more than five lots and we should have had one.
Correct, but I think what they did, Tim, is I don't think they can, included it on the common driveway. They came to us and they, they created the lots on Sawyer Hill.
But the common driveway isn't the driving factor. It's the division of a parcel of land for more than five units.
Got it.
And Rhodes has just done that, so we need to remind him that one of those house lots has to be affordable. We need to tell that to the building inspector.
Hmm.
Correct?
Uh, well, he created the lots, but.
That's it.
That's all you have.
You create more than five lots.
And I think that's what it's been in terms of, or because he's done a couple of times now. He's put five in back and one on the main road.
Right.
On, on the subdivision road, and we've all said it was okay.
No, we didn't say it was okay. I don't think we had a discussion. Cause he did that. On, on, on Peach Hill.
Right.
And I don't ever remember, I, I think we just let it slip.
Hmm, I think we discussed it because that was where I kind of first learned about that.
Yeah, but i- if you take any parcel of land. Anyway, we don't need to talk about it tonight.
Right.
Um, we can let Thomas and Thomas and. Jay and Carolyn go to bed, but, um, we do, we need to review this because. We can't let people keep slipping through the cracks on this one. But these guys, I think, drop down to five because.
So that they didn't have to do that. Yeah.
Well, the same thing happened, um, where the guy put it in near the five corners.
Pollard.
They only built five. They didn't have one on the road.
Yeah, he built.
No, but they were gonna put six in originally.
Six, and then they read, they learned about that and they dropped it to five.
Yeah. So maybe we need to reconsider the number.
I move, yeah, interesting. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's non-debatable, so I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Oh, he's, Tom, you're muted. Thomas.
And Jay, you're gonna figure out if we can actually have a meeting on the fourth?
Um, well, I needed to talk to Carolyn about it because I think she knows something about all these channels and all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so let's close the hearing, uh, in the meeting.
Hearing's closed. Meeting, I'll vote in the meeting, uh, I, I, so, if he carries.
Good. Nice job.
That, that abstention.